Good evening and welcome to the Zoom webinar forum for the candidates for Bainbridge Island City Council. The forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap County. The forum is being recorded and will be, it will appear on our website, the L W V dot Kitsap dot org and also at B C A P, it will be there in a few days. My name is Jackie Bailey and I will be the moderator for tonight's event. The League of Women Voters is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties. The League is celebrating our 100th anniversary and we'd like to invite any of you aged 16 or older to join our organization and help support our mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. When you registered through this forum, you were invited to send in questions. We have consolidated those plus others the public has contributed into the questions that I will ask of the BI City Council candidates. The candidates for BI City Council are as follows. For District Two, North Ward, Brenda Fan Troy Johnson and Chris Smith. For District Three, South Ward, John Quitsland and Kent Scott. For District Five, Central Ward, Clarence Moriwaki and Rasham, I said it wrong, didn't I? Rasham Nassar. And District Seven, Joe Dietz and Ron Keltier. Thank you candidates for stepping up to offer your skills and talents in service to our island. You deserve our respect. We ask that during this forum, you maintain civility with each other. Candidates during tonight's forum, each of you will be given 90 seconds to make an opening statement. We will go in order that your name appears on the ballot. Then I will begin the questions. Each of you in rotating order will have 60 seconds to respond. If you have answered the question and only if you have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. If you run out of time, you are allowed to finish your sentence. Our timekeeper will maintain the countdown electronic clock. And at the conclusion of a Q and A, each of you will have 90 seconds for closing marks. We will proceed with those in reverse order from how your name appears on the ballot. We'll now begin the opening statements. For District Two, North Ward, Brenda Fan Troy Johnson.
Hi, thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us to have this forum. My name is Brenda Fan Troy Johnson and I'm running for the District Two, North Ward position that I currently hold. I was raised in Detroit. My mother taught me that even though I could achieve anything if I believed them worked hard. I went through a lot of hard times, but she was right. Good education and hard work can open the door to opportunity. But that door, what keeps it open is tenacity and speaking up even when you are the underdog. I have been on a lot of different committees on Bainbridge Island and I have volunteered to do a lot of things. The one thing that I'm most proud of
If you're going to be able to
is the Race Equity Task Force that I'm on. I've served there and I've served on the Sustainable Transportation Task Force. I'm a board member of Housing Kitsap Committee Member and City Liaison for the Bainbridge Public Art Committee. I have an MBA from Spring Arbor University and a BA in Information Security from Davenport University. I believe that the biggest attribute a council member can have, and I know that I possess, is the ability to listen without prejudice and serve the community and not have any personal agendas. Stop right there because I'm running out of time.
Thank you. We'll go on to Chris Smith. Who's not in attendance?
He was here and he's off the screen now. I don't understand that.
It seems like Chris lost the connection and we're trying to get him back.
Okay, we'll go ahead to District Three, South Ward, John Quitsland.
Hello, thank you, League of Women Voters and speaking to people I don't see and to my fellow candidates. My credentials are laid out in the voter's pamphlet that many people have probably already seen and so I will just comment very generally. I feel as well prepared as anyone can be for service on the Bainbridge Island City Council. I know the community well. I know its history. I'm acquainted with all sorts of people here and I think I could talk with anyone on common ground. I served on the Planning Commission for nine years. So I've worked with both city staff and council members and with many people who volunteer their time and their engagement with the issues that we all face. For much of my time on the Planning Commission, I felt that I didn't have the bandwidth to serve on the council. But by the end of nine years, I'm really, nine years on the, on the Planning Commission, I got tired of just making recommendations that got sidetracked and misunderstood at the council level. So I'm taking my chance and believe that I can do the job with distinction and help the council to work with all the other parts of the city government to accomplish a great deal.
Thank you. Kent Scott?
Yes, thank you for hosting this. My name is Kent Scott. I want to say that my professional work and civic engagement illustrate my style of working. I am patient and kind and compassionate. I mean, I always work to solve problems, dealing with issues with civil dialogue and compromise. My 40 years of professional experience is quite broad from urban planning, civic design, multifamily housing, mixed use housing and affordable housing. These projects had conflicting needs, agendas and regulations, but they also had, more importantly, real budgets and real outcomes. Bottom line is I have real world experience. My work has not been theoretical and has not been analytical. And for 30 years, I have worked and committed myself to Bainbridge Island, being on the Design Review Board, the Open Space Commission, the Public Art Committee. I had been a consultant and volunteer to the Land Trust, board member for Squeaky Wheels and attended countless task force meetings. But I've also seen change on Bainbridge in corporation, Winslow Way improvements, Safeway Construction, Linwood and so much more. We have to align our compliance with their land use. We have to preserve our water resources. We have to protect our natural environment and we have to embrace a more diverse community, both economically and racially. We have to improve governments' process, regulations and road safety. I look forward to working actively with you for problem solving and commit to contributing to a open and civil dialogue.
Thank you. And now District Five, Central Ward, Clarence Moriwaki.
Hi, I'm Clarence Moriwaki and I love Bainbridge Island. I've been on this island for more than 20 years, serving in various community groups, including city-sponsored, the City Health Housing Human Services Council, the Salary Commission, Marge Williams, but most proudly involved with the Bainbridge Island Japanese American Exclusion Memorial, our only national historic site. Please go to my website, ClarenceForBainbridge.us to see a full listing of my community service. And because of that, back in 2017, the Chamber of Commerce honored me with the Citizen of the Year Award. It was a humbling and wonderful honor. Another thing most people don't know about me, I was on the Takwella City Council back in the late eighties and it was a tumultuous time, just like when this city was incorporated in 1990 because we took in parts of unincorporated King County that doubled our jurisdiction and tripled our population. We had to go through major zoning to make that work so I understand land use. And because of this background, it's sort of like being a sheriff, a person coming into our police department and you're a sheriff from Los Angeles, let's say, and you come into our city. Now he doesn't know our codes, but he is familiar with law enforcement. I have a full record on Bainbridge, I mean on Takwella, on working on the city council. I understand how city councils work. I just need to know the different codes here and I'd be proud to be a city council member and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Rasham Nassar?
Yes, thank you. Hi, and thank you to the Women League of Voters for hosting this really important event and thank you to all the citizens who have logged in to join and who are witnessing and participating in the democratic process. Really nice to see some big of a turnout. Again, my name is Rasham Nassar and I am a current city council member here at the city of Bainbridge Island. I'm also a mom of two small children. I have expertise in local land use codes and have used that knowledge to stop out of scale developments and protect groundwater resources as a city council member. I also supported protections for aquifer recharge areas, increased area protections, helped support protections for heritage trees, restrictions on clear cuts, a development moratorium and have advocated to reduce sewer overflows into Puget Sound. I led the effort to ban more unsightly storage unit buildings and ban large hotels in downtown Winslow. I led an investigation into the city's wasteful $9 million purchase of the Harrison Medical Building and the questionable actions surrounding that purchase. I've stood for island values, transparency and government, especially when it comes to land use, government contracts and spending on capital projects since elected in 2018. I'm running for reelection to see that those policies that were enacted during my term are not repealed and to continue to watch the city's budget to make sure that your dollars, your taxpayer dollars, don't go to waste and that decisions coming out of City Hall actually reflect the values of islanders.
Thank you. And for District Seven, North Ward, Joe Dietz?
Hi, yes, I'm Joe Dietz. I'm your District Seven, North Ward representative and I'm running for reelection. To tell you a little bit about myself, I have a background in finance and clean energy, particularly in solar. I worked with Senator Rockefeller to create an innovative solar law. I also did what I believe is still the largest solar energy system on Bainbridge Island, the 72 kilowatt community solar project at City Hall. I'd like here in this opening to talk about my campaign and what I've been up to. I've got an amazing group of Bainbridge High School students helping me. Together, we've knocked on about 1,000 houses, listening and talking with people. So what have I learned from this? That islanders really like living here, that people want their city government to listen, to be responsive to their needs. They want us to plan ahead for the future and they want us to accomplish our work without divisiveness. As to that, people have memories. This is an exceptionally well-educated, well-formed community. People understand that the world is not static, that it is changing. People, they totally get climate change. People are generally interested in what we were doing here at the city, implementing the Climate Action Plan, something I'm very involved in. They want us to address the lack of affordable housing and not just talk about it. And they really like bike paths and walking trails so people can travel safely without and get out of their cars. This campaign tells me that islanders want us to carry on with this work and do so collaboratively. This I have done in my first term, I pledged to do so in my second. Thank you.
And now we will go to, back to District Two, North Ward, Chris Smith.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
We're forgetting.
Welcome back.
Okay, thank you. And to whoever connected me, I appreciate that very much. I'm a 28-year resident of Bainbridge Island and what I hope to bring to the council is a track record of principled leadership and teamwork. Now, we're all leaders, but the thing that I like about what I just said is the term teamwork, which when you break it down is about teams and it's about getting work done. And we're at a critical time. We're at an inflection point here on Bainbridge with COVID and people becoming untethered from their workplace. We can experience significant growth and we don't get out ahead of that in terms of infrastructure and other things we're going to wish that we had. So what I have tried to do in my background, by the way, is, is six years as a, as a military officer in the US Army and then followed by 30 years in marketing and marketing management at a little outfit called IBM. And so I was responsible if, for the military for a widely diverse intelligence mission and as a captain in the 82nd Airborne Division. So that's interestingly enough, in the military, being a leader in the military is about making the environment capable of supporting people who know what they're doing and letting them get their offers done. Same thing is true at IBM and that's what I want to bring to the council.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to the questions. The first question.
Pardon me? You passed me up.
How did I do that? Well, I'm so sorry. Let's go back.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep, sorry, Ron.
Okay. Good evening and thanks to the League of Women Voters. I also want to thank my all-volunteer campaign team, which includes my wife and closest advisor, Polly. My team's dedicated work and advice have made me a better candidate. As a voter, I look for certain qualities in a prospective city council member. I look for good values, including commitment to environmental stewardship and honesty. I want council members who are smart, intellectually curious and know how to innovate. They should be willing to learn about a wide range of topics related to city government. When I hold my opponent up to these qualities, I have serious concerns and that's why I chose to run. The makeup of our city council is extremely important. One ill-conceived project can have serious adverse impacts. A $9 million purchase of a facility worth $4 million erases the things we could have done with $5 million. Bainbridge Island's future hinges on a capable city council committed to wise decisions to address serious issues while protecting our quality of life. I look forward to taking my record of getting things done, along with the lessons I've learned, into a second term on your city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll proceed to the questions. Again, my apologies, Ron.
It's okay.
The first question, first question is the BI City Council seems to have a hard time coming together to make decisions. How would you bring the council to better and faster decision-making on various issues and then executing on these decisions? We'll start with John Quitsland.
I've watched the council a lot. I find that they get into a kind of huddle and only the seven of them matter. I believe that the council needs to be more open to communication outside their number. They, I've seen them working well with the city manager. That's, that's absolutely essential and being, having trusting relationships with all the members, all the leading members of the administration team. Communication with the Planning Commission has sometimes broken down, not in adversarial attitudes, but just a kind of indifference. And there's a lot that can be gained from meeting together and listening to one another, taking, taking the, the work that the Planning Commission does and building on it rather than stopping it.
Thank you. Kent Scott?
Yeah. I mean, there clearly are issues and, you know, I've watched council. Some of them are clear to me and I think there's a lot of things that a lot of people don't see. I mean, what I have seen is the new city manager has taken a strong reign at some of the council meetings and how council operates, clearly defining what council's roles are and what staff roles are. I think this is part of it, but I think council also may have trust issues with staff, which is yet another issue for Blair King to help resolve. But I am not beyond trying to reach outside for help for council interpersonal issues. Meanwhile, we all have to be responsive and we have to be honest and punctual. I mean, everything, things can break down and I am not averse that if there are issues that we bring a third party in and try to work things through. The important thing is that we have to be responsive to the citizens and we have to do it right.
Thank you. Joe Dietz?
Yeah, thank you. Well, great question. I think, first off, councils made very good progress and particularly under our new city manager, Blair King. But there is room for improvement for how we conduct our work and treat others. I think the council can be better representatives of all islanders, that we can better promote the public good and preserve the public trust if we take some things to heart. One, we recognize that while everyone is entitled to their opinion, when it comes to stating facts to support it, those facts need to be both relevant and accurate, that we recognize the importance of our citizen, citizen advisory committees and that particularly we give them thanks, due respect for the work they are doing. And perhaps most important, we recognize, we met, that work on council can be stressful and no one can, can't claim perfect behavior. But all of us, all of us need to strive the city's code of conduct in both practice and spirit.
Thank you. Ron Keltier?
Thank you. I think the, the first thing that any council member can do is just set a good example. If you have an issue with one of your colleagues, it's best to just discuss that directly with that person and not let it be aired during a city council meeting. And that's not difficult to just call the person, meet with them and talk about it. And, and I think that everybody on the city council has an obligation to set aside personal feelings, those always arise, but you've got to have a little box you put them in. They keep them off to the side. I didn't have the best relationship with one of the former city managers, but when I served as the deputy mayor and even later, we actually did work together and we knew how to set things aside and focus on what we needed to do, you know, to, to be good servants to the public. I do think that, that I wouldn't rule out on the city council having, you know, an arbitrator or whatever you want, some kind of a person come in to, to help with interpersonal relationships as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Fan Troy Johnson?
Yeah, I think that we've made great progress. I made it a point to call, call it out when I was being appointed for this position. I called out that we weren't being civil to each other in the way that people talked to one another was degrading. We saw some of that last night at the last city council meeting. Some of my colleagues seem to think that certain issues are funny and that they're, you know, they don't have a stake in them. So, you know, they, they let their fability come out and it's very, it's, it's, it's degrading to the people who are trying to be there to do servant leadership and to try to be accountable to the public. I think that people have been in this job maybe a little bit too long and they've forgotten it accountable to the public. And I think that this election may call that out for some folks.
Thank you. Chris Smith?
Thank you very much for that. That's a very good question. And I have a broad experience in what some would refer to as, as leading without having any formal leadership responsibility, being more of an influencer and leading by example. And in, in those situations, both in the military and in my previous employment and frankly now as a flight instructor, I have to lead by emulation, which is do the right thing, do things right and show respect for the individual, whoever that is. Those are three pillars of leadership that will carry all of us through. Finally, we need to focus on what binds us together rather than our differences and across the differences, find our common cause. True enough, where we are right now, the future is not going to be an accident. It will be no accident. We on this committee have to make it happen.
Thank you. Clarence Moriwaki?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everything and most of the things that people have said, but I want to talk about one way the city council can be more effective and that's staying on focus, staying on, staying on mission. And what the city council does, it has a vision plan, I mean a board plan and it has an agenda to move forward, but far too often, items are brought up that are not on the agenda, topics get going sideways, left and right because of opinions. And it's sort of like starting, having a restaurant where you have a menu set up and you work on it in the morning and get all your things together and you're ready to announce and open the doors and someone says, well, let's put pizza on the menu. But that wasn't our plan. So you have to stick to the plan because that leads to predictability. It leads to trust in government. And one more important thing, it leads to better cohesion within the organization because you know everybody's there focused on the goal, mission, instead of thinking that anybody has a preconceived agenda and that's really what's driving their, their focus. So just sticking to the plan, sticking to the agenda and we'll have a better city council.
Thank you. Rasham Nassar?
Yeah, this is a really good question. I know that the community, you know, has, has written to the council about this issue before, noticed it from watching our council meetings. So I want to acknowledge that, you know, in years prior, the focus of our, a lot of our discussions was on personalities rather than policies. Rather than being on city, city-related issues, council would also often veer into the realm of personal attacks. When I was appointed mayor in January of this year, my focus was on cleaning up our council meetings. And I did this by leading meetings consistent with our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, which do not allow personal attacks from the dais and also to encourage efficiency in discussions and debate. I think that we've greatly improved the decorum of our council meetings simply by holding all council members equally accountable to follow our adopted rules. I also think that professional objective leadership at City Hall in the city manager is imperative to model that level of professionalism for council members. And I, I do think that we can still improve upon promoting and supporting minority opinions and voices from the dais.
Thank you. The second question, there are a number of county and regional boards, including Puget Sound Council of Government, which includes Snohomish, King, Pierce and Kitsap Counties and also Kitsap County Boards, including Transit, Health and Human Services and Regional 911 Services. BI concerns are not always considered if we're not present at these meetings. Please discuss your interest and awareness to the boards and council and your feelings about participation in these county-wide offices. And we'll start with Rasham Nassar.
Well, I think it's critical that the city of Bainbridge Island is represented in all county-wide boards and commissions. And as far as I know, the city council does so far appoint liaisons to most of the county boards, at least where we're invited to attend. And rather than have the mayor, because we don't have a traditional mayor form of government, attend those meetings, we assign those obligations out to council members that are interested in attending. The land use regional committee is a committee that I was really involved in. And one of the reasons why I'm so supportive of having the city represented at those committees is because really important decisions are made, whether it relates to emergency management or response, whether it relates to Health and Human Services or land use planning. A lot of citizens don't know how to access those forums and don't know how to, how to, you know, give public comment in those debates. So it's critical that council members attend those meetings, keep watch of the discussions that are happening and then as often as they can liaise with the community about what discussions are being had at that level.
Clarence Moriwaki?
I believe the Kitsap County Regional Coordinating Council is probably the most premier because it sets up and manages growth allocations from the Growth Management Act and it has a big impact on the future of our community. But one that I think is going to be more important as we move in the future is the Health, the Kitsap County Health Board. And we should be more involved because we don't have, we've lost the Swedish system on our island. I lost my doctor, he left island and we're going to have more problems according with, with COVID and the rest. So coordinating those resources, because we can't do it on Bainbridge Island, it's going to take a regional effort. We're going to need a lot of help from our partners, from the county and hopefully from the state also to make sure that our health service needs are met. We have an aging population. Our population is 10 years higher on average than the state or the rest of the county. That's a, that's a further need and I'm 65 now, so I'm also in that upper demographic and I'm also looking forward to getting my booster and get vaccinated, get those boosters too.
Thank you. Chris Smith?
Thank you for that. And Clarence, I'm also evacuated, vaccinated and I was the first guy in line for obvious reasons, so. But I'd like to participate in Puget Sound Regional Council in terms of transportation because we connect through that for a pretty narrow passage there with the Agvek Passage Bridge. So how do we, how do we communicate or get on the transportation piece with that, with multimodal transportation, rolling transportation and bicycle trails and et cetera? The other thing I'd like to, to participate in is climate action in the, in the Puget Sound as well as with Kitsap County. And we, we can certainly be part of that. I think we're leading the charge in terms of climate action as a city and I applaud the city for doing that. In addition to that, I think that we ought to be
Thank you.
Into the shoreline management process that
Chris, thank you. Thank you. Brenda Fan Troy Johnson?
Um, yeah, just as was said before, we are assigned out to be on committees and boards. I'm on the Housing Kitsap Board and that is one of my interests with affordable housing and, you know, I get to weigh in for Bainbridge on those issues. I'm also a, a new member of a new committee, which is the which is the First Puget Sound Regional Council Equity Advisory Committee, which is 20 members of the Kitsaps, Snohomish, Pierce, and King County. So I'm looking forward to that to weigh in on equity issues around the county. I'm also, I've been involved with KITA, which is the Kitsap Economic Development Group. And they've put on workshops that I've attended in the Puget Sound Region Council. I mean, I think that we're involved as a committee, as a council. We're weighing in for Bainbridge Island because we're representing our constituents.
Thank you. Ron Peltier.
Thank you, Jackie. I'm glad that this question was asked about the regional and county planning boards because it's really important that we understand how our regional planning in the Growth Management Act is being administered. I served on the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board while they were working on the Vision 2050 Regional Planning Document.
Hot water? I don't have any. I forgot to get any.
Somebody's not muted. It's like our comp plan for the whole region. And I got to know, we got to meet representatives from different, you know, places like Seattle City Council and so forth. Also served on the Planning Policy Board of Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. But it's really important that we understand how the how the policies that are adopted affect us. And some of the policies I propose are related to improve sewage treatment plants and stormwater facilities.
Thank you. Joe Dietz.
Yeah, thank you. A great question. And like Brenda said, as council members, we sit on a lot of regional committees. I was trying to think of all the ones I'm on. I was just recently appointed to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council. This is, you know, Bainbridge often we we bat above our weight. This, in this role, I'm representing not just Bainbridge, but all small cities in Kitsap, which includes Port Orchard and Bremerton and Polesbo. So, or not Bremerton, excuse me. So I've just been appointed to that. Also, I am, let's see, on the Kitsap 911 Commission, the Kitsap Emergency Management Committee. But also, most importantly, is the KRCC, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. I'm the Bainbridge representative. So, and what does that do? That is has been spoken. That's sort of our overarching council. We I represent Bainbridge, and then there's mayors from Port Orchard, Bremerton, Polesbo, the county commissioners. And we look at land use and transportation. And most recently, we we looked at the countywide planning policies. And there's still a lot of work to do.
Thank you. Kent Scott.
What interests me most is working on the council committee with Kitsap County. And the reason is many. One, except for maybe Clarence, I've ridden across Agapassas Bridge on my bike, I could say hundreds of times. But all of us have all seen the incredible traffic and problems that occur on the island coming on in the morning and going off in the afternoon. I mean, there are significant problems in coordination that needs to happen to reduce the amount of traffic and to improve the non-motorized access on and off island. I mean, we need sober solutions. I have to say, I'm not a fan of where I see the sustainable transportation plan going. We need solutions that will work so that people will actually use facilities. I mean, the regional context is super important. We just have to have realistic goals and outcomes. And I think being on the transit board should help the island be a better destination for for making transit work.
Thank you. John Quitsland.
Yes, there's been reference to the Kitsap County Regional Coordinating Council. And I thank Joe Dietz for inviting me to participate in one of those retreat session that discussed how we incorporate equity considerations in the range of planning responsibilities for population, for for housing and transportation, access to parks and recreation opportunities and so on. Because we have a changing population throughout Kitsap County. Other other parts of the county have changed more rapidly, maybe more radically than Bainbridge has at this point. But we are part of Kitsap County, and we have a lot to learn. Also, the PSRC produced an enormous amount of planning and demographic analysis. That's something to take into account.
Thank you. Question three. What are the first four actions you will take to implement the Bainbridge Island Climate Action Plan? And we'll start with Joe Dietz.
Well, I'm doing that now. Yes, very quickly, we are, I am part of a group that's will soon deliver, while we discussed this last night, colleagues, Brenda, I think you're the one, oh, and Mayor. We discussed last night of bringing in an ordinance to reduce plastic from the food service industry. I've also, I'm going, we're going to be presenting how to put a biodigester on the island, which will reduce waste, reduce greenhouse gases and create a local generation of energy. And then we just got funding for emergency hubs, put solar energy systems to increase our resilience and in the face of climate change. And also, let's just say, I'd like to bring up the transportation, our non-motorized transportation. I know there was some criticism I heard here tonight about our sustainable transportation plan. I think this is a great plan. I think we need to get behind it. We've got a lot of community support, and that's going to definitely make us more resilient in a changing climate.
Thank you. Ron Peltier. You're on mute. You need to unmute. There you go.
I guess I was already unmuted. Thank you, Jackie. One of the first things we need to do is improve our forest management on the island. And to do that, one of the first steps is I would I would propose that we reinstate our community, our forestry commission that we used to have at the city so they can start working on that. We need to get on with non-motorized facilities. I haven't seen the finished plan of the so-called Sustainable Transportation Plan, but we have some facilities that we need to get worked on and mostly paved shoulders. Our groundwater management plan is part of the Climate Action Plan. And I would like to see us work on a on a program for encouraging people to install solar panels on their houses. I had talked to my opponent about this when we were on the council together. I knew he had expertise and I was hoping we could do something together, but that never materialized. I was disappointed in that.
Thank you. John Quitsland.
Well, the Climate Action Plan is grounded in science, extraordinary work done by island residents who have really tried to understand our carbon budget and the things that we have done that have been mentioned, waste management, including all the different, sort of building on our history with zero waste initiatives. That's important. Transportation planning and also combining transportation planning with housing planning so that we can have an impact on the traffic commute, people commuting or work on Bainbridge Island from great distances. That's that's a burden on our on our whole system. So management of this shoreline management program is another piece of it that will eventually address sea level rise and adaptations to that.
Thank you. Kent Scott.
For me, what I need to see in the Climate Action Plan is to know, understand what's cost effective, where the return on investment is for the island, putting money into things that we actually are saving carbon. You know, the issue is not so much about how much you drive because it's about consumption. I mean, if you're making $150,000 a year, you're spending it. And if you're not driving, you're having service vehicles and delivery vehicles and you're flying all over the place. I mean, I think there's some serious things to look at to be sure that we're attacking the problem in a meaningful way. I do not want to burden businesses with sustainable initiatives that compromise their business and have very little impact on the environment. I think we have to be very careful. You may know that there's 907 homes that will experience severe flooding in the next 30 years due to climate change. Land use is a significant issue dealing with climate change that the Climate Action Plan does not address. It needs to be broader. It needs to be meaningful. It needs to be cost effective.
Thank you, Kent. Clarence Mariwaki.
Of all the ideas, and thank you, Kent, for bringing up bicycling because that is a big part of my life, too. So non-motorized transportation, alternative transportation that gets us out of driving is going to be very important, not only for the environment, but just for the health of the community. And I think that's going to be even more accessible because of all these electric vehicles that people use, electric bicycles and such, it's going to make that more possible. One thing that has been mentioned, but the Climate Action Plan really points this out, we can do everything we can, and I'm trying. I drive an electric car, but I'm part of the problem now. Because our largest single contributor to carbon in our community is Puget Sound Energy. And if Puget Sound Energy just went green, or even partially, we would drop dramatically. We would be at a level like Seattle or Tacoma with their electrical systems. So that's out of control, but that's something that we really got to work with them to stop because that's our biggest contributor to our climate change and our climate load.
Okay, thank you. Brenda Fantry Johnson.
Yeah, I think we're doing a great job. We funded the Climate Action Plan and we're, you know, our our role is laid out in that. The facilities that we're building for sustainable transportation will also help with this. We're also working with the businesses so that, you know, we're not trying to put any undue pressure on them. We're we're going to be a leader as far as this goes with the plastics. We're working as as a team with the businesses and the council to try to make sure that what we're doing is sustainable for the businesses and, you know, our constituents alike. So I think that Bainbridge is on the right path. The Climate Action Plan also has a climate adaptation tool in it that will look at projects to determine whether or not they they will be climate, you know, impacting or whether we should not even go through with them. And it also has an equity component to it to look at the same thing. So I think we're on top of all of this as far as more so than other cities. So I think
Rasham Nasser.
Yeah, foremost, I think that we need to stick and improve, stick to and improve upon our current land use plan that leads to enhance and increase preservation policies of our forested lands, undeveloped lands, and that continues to reject the increasing growth pressures to develop outside of our designated growth area, which is Winslow for Bainbridge. For example, I support the Transfer of Development Rights Program from, which would take development rights from the rural parts of the island to Winslow, where housing is near transit and services where the need for cars is less. I was also closely involved in helping support funding in the budget for the groundwater management plan, and I'm proud to say that that work is now underway. But funding for implementation of the Climate Action Plan is going to be key. So for me, it's an exercise in smart budgeting, making sure that when we take on a plan, we have thought through the funding mechanisms to implement that plan. And for that, I would look to the guidance of our new Climate Adaptation Officer and the city manager to help us identify where we can invest that's going to yield the greatest return on our investment in terms of helping us meet our goal of reducing carbon emissions 90% by 2040.
Thank you. And Chris Smith.
Uh, thank you for that. All great ideas. And I am also interested in supporting green building using carbon-free as much as possible, carbon-free materials to build buildings. My first home on Bainbridge was a solar home with a wood foundation, if you can imagine that. The other thing I'm interested in is shoreline stabilization, and we should join with Kitsap County to make sure that we can make that happen. Finally, we should look at the neighborhood greenways to make sure that there's an organization that can integrate bicycle and motorized traffic so that we can integrate that safely. And finally, we need to increase the bandwidth on Bainbridge Island so that we can get people off the roads and online, supporting all the different communities through 5G and fiber communications.
Thank you. Okay, the next question kind of builds on the last. A little bit of explanation. Our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions comes from the generation and use of electricity from Puget Sound Electric. More than a third of PSE energy comes from the Coal Strip 3 coal mine in Montana. And more than 50% of the energy from PSE to Bainbridge Island comes from coal. Washington State will eliminate outer state coal as a source of energy by 2025, but that's still the state coal mines as a source of energy production. Are you satisfied that PSE will meet or exceed the BI Climate Action Plan? Or should alternatives be sought? And why or why not? And we'll start with Chris Smith.
Uh, thank you for that. First of all, the the very first thing that we can do, and to be careful about this, is to seal our buildings and homes and insulate them correctly so they use less energy in order to cool and to heat them. And then the other thing that we need to do is get realistic about our association with PSE. We are not going to be able to split off from PSE because Puget, you know, electrical energy is economies of scale, and we don't have the scale to take on that responsibility, I believe, ourselves. So we need to be realistic about that. Furthermore, if we get very focused on the other forms of greenhouse gas emissions that we have here in on Bainbridge Island, I think that the PSE will take efforts on their own over the course of the next few years to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. We ought to let them do it.
Thank you. Brenda Fantry Johnson.
Yeah, while I don't know much about what PSE is doing in other places, I do know when I worked for American Electric and Power that they got a lot of heat for using coal. And, you know, the way that the world is going, all of these businesses that are using coal are starting to come in line now. I was just reading about a company in Colorado who's building a all solar powered fuel mill, which is, you know, unheard of, and you're not using any kind of coal. So I think, you know, as the city council, we have some weight in what we say to PSE and how we'd like them to comply with our Climate Action Plan. But it's just like with WashDAD, all we have is a voice in it. We can't make them do anything, but we have a big voice. And if we use that voice with the rest of the cities in Kitsap County, it's even a larger, a larger voice.
Thank you. Rasham Nasser.
Yeah, I'll I'll start by saying that I, having experience discussing with PSE relative to an issue that's ongoing right now in the community relating to high-power transmission lines. I know that there is some collaboration that council members can engage in, even though they're outside of our jurisdiction to relay the concerns of the communities. We can have some impact there, but ultimately, they're private industry and they're going to do what they're going to do. And so I think where the city can take a lead is simply helping to reduce consumption. I would, for example, support an income qualifying subsidy for solar rooftop panels on homes. I would support legislation for smaller, that would allow smaller homes, that would that would allow new technology for green homes, for example, using utilizing solar and and other energy sources. And in order to allow that to happen, we have to be realistic that it really starts with the planning department and the permitting process. And that is exactly the job that a city council can do and can do very quickly.
Thank you. Clarence Mariwaki.
Thanks for the follow-up from my previous question because that is the issue. The thing that all these folks have mentioned, and we implement everything in the Climate Action Plan, we're still stuck with our energy provider. That's Puget Sound Energy. And that's really frustrating because we on Bainbridge Island are trying to do the right thing. Yet, as people have mentioned, it is a private utility, so we can do a few things. We can use our collaboration effort, but more importantly, they are a private corporation that does have shareholders. You can put pressure there. Really make it make it hard for them to respond, not respond, but explain why this plant goes on. And I think public pressure has a lot of power. It can really force corporations. We've seen this all the time with boycotts and and all these other issues. So I think that is possibly a way to make them change their ways so we can have a greener island here on Bainbridge Island.
Thank you. Ron Peltier.
Well, thank you. Yes. One of the first things that I would propose on city councils is that we get a lobbyist to go to the state legislature. Because some of the, a lot of this stuff is happening at the state level. And if we were to send a lobbyist that had the weight of the city behind them, we might be able to have some influence. I know we have local legislators that care about I know we have local legislators that care about our issues, but I think we need our own lobbyists. I, I like the idea of more solar on Bainbridge Island, and my opponent knows a lot about this, but when an intern came to us and wanted to work on community solar, Joe took him under his wing, and that's the last I ever heard of that. One of my ideas was to have a program at the city that helped people get solar panels put on their roofs. And that would help them, contact them with installers and where to get loans. And another thing was a solar access ordinance that my opponent proposed a couple of times and didn't follow through with, but I'd like to see him do that if he gets reelected. Thank you.
And Joe Deets.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'd love to get that solar access ordinance background, so I'll, I'll, I'll take that. Yeah, this is a great question. I, this has been a big part of my life for the last 15 years, working with, trying to work with PSC. They've been very frustrating. So, I think, Jackie, your question was, is, what was it, has PSC done an adequate job? No, they have not. They are still a very high-carbon polluter. They are not a good community partner. We, I've been trying for years to get more local energy generation. I, I did the community solar project at City Hall. I've done a lot of, I've done more solar on Bainbridge than anyone on the island, let alone in this room. So, there's a lot of work to do with PSC, and luckily, we don't need a lobbyist. We are negotiating a franchise agreement now. We are just starting that process. So, now we have some leverage, and I brought in the Climate Change Advisory Committee to try and to get PSC to do what we want them to do and to have clean energy, more local generation, energy-efficient homes, and all that.
Thank you. Kent Scott.
I am thankful for what the state has done to mandate how PSC and other power suppliers generate their power. I don't know how much of an island issue what PSC does is, in other words, how much we can affect. What is important to point out is 10 years ago, if you all remember Repower Bainbridge, and that was a hugely successful initiative where people were able to buy updated appliances and insulate their homes, which had a dramatic effect on energy consumption. We can do things that are on the ground that make a difference for people who live here. PSC, I don't know. Another really critical thing that we can't take our eyes off is just the notion of climate change on our island with a 40% reduction in infiltration and the loss of woodlands and the fire danger that exists. I mean, there's so many things here that we have to deal with. PSC is important, I agree, but I think councils should focus on things that are of dire importance to islanders in the near future.
Thank you. And John Quipslund.
That's what I think. We may have to wait for the federal government to clamp down more on coal-generated power. But at the state level, as Kent said, that's, that's, that's another important lever that we don't have, but that we can rely on and, or, or deal with. PSC, it hasn't been top of mind for me, but years ago, I opted for the green power alternative, paying a little bit more for my power. I understand that that's been a bit of a smoke-and-mirrors operation on PSC's part, but it is a choice that I made, and I think businesses have done the same. It's, it's important to conserve, it's important to insulate and do everything you can to reduce the, the draw.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to question five. The comprehensive plan adopted four years ago said that road safety was the large and growing problem. Is this still an issue? The city of Seattle has set speed limits of 25 miles an hour on arterial roads. Should COBE investigate island-wide speed limit reductions to both increase pedestrian and cycling, pedestrian and cycling safety and as a means of reducing gas emissions? And we'll start with Kent Scott.
Well, it's really good what Seattle did, but if you know what the mayor of Paris recently did, she said, hey, 30 kilometers per hour, which is 18 miles an hour. I mean, we have a problem not just with the speed limits, it's way greater. For example, how many roads on the island go from 25 to 30 to 35 to 30 to 25? You talk to the police chiefs, and I have over the years, and they say, how can I enforce something where the speed limits are so varied? I mean, we have to have a consistent speed limit on arterials and neighborhood residential roads. We also have to do enforcement. You know, if 20% of people driving are exceeding the speed limit by 10 miles an hour, I think that's a heyday for the police department and for the city. That's a boatload of money. I mean, people are deterred from riding their bicycles and walking, not so much because of real safety issues, but because of perceived safety issues. We have to attack this in a very meaningful way, and it's cheap to reduce the speed limits and also to enforce speeds. We have to make cycling and walking safer.
Thank you. John Quipslund.
This is, this is a problem with people who can't get where they want to go fast enough. I, I've, I've lived a more relaxed life in retirement, but I do know that it's a problem in especially residential streets. And it will improve safety for everyone, and it will promote more bicycling and, and walking on our roads when we have people respecting the limits and, and perhaps lowering the limits will make a difference. We do have signs up that remind people when they're going way over the speed limit, and that's, that's a helpful thing. So, it's, it's, it has a place in our planning, our sustainable transportation planning, certainly. Proper speed limits.
Thank you. Ron Peltier.
Thank you, Jackie. I've been an advocate for establishing non-motorized levels of service for our roads. They are described in the island-wide transportation plan, but they're not part of the traffic concurrency we have for new development. And traffic concurrency is a requirement to get a new subdivision approved. So, what I would like to see is that those levels of service as part of concurrency, so that if you're proposing and developed and, and your roads are not served adequately, you don't get to do your development until they're upgraded. I'd also like to see concurrency tied to speed limits. So, if we have roads that have levels of service that are below the levels that we establish, then we have to lower the speed limits because that's one way to increase the level of service for non-motorized transportation. There's resistance to this, and I noticed what I'm hearing is the Sustainable Transportation Plan hasn't incorporated non-motorized levels of service. They have something called Levels of Comfort, and I think that's a mistake. We need something with non-motors that's connected to traffic concurrency for new development.
Thank you. And Joe Deets.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. Yes, traffic is a problem on the island, and it's getting worse. We need to get, get more cars off the road. But let's just say, just lowering the speed limits is, is not going to work, folks. People are going to drive at a certain speed. We only have two police cars on the island at any one time for enforcement. So, what we can do is put more, as, John, you were talking about the electronic signs. We, that has been shown to be effective. They're telling you your speed. We are investing in traffic calming measures on, on, through council. We're funding that. We have an internal city committee which could, because this is the single biggest thing we get as council members, is people talking about what can you do about our road. So, we, we're collecting all that data and, and then determining, okay, where is the most important places? I could tell you, Sunrise Drive where I live is deadly. People don't, I don't want to walk or ride my bike, and we had a tragic accident a year from now. So, there is a real serious issue to reduce traffic, and there's, we are, we are working on that. I can tell you.
Okay, thank you. Chris Smith.
Thank you for that. The net of it is, is I think we ought to do what we already know that we need to do. And we've had a number of studies on integrating rolling and motorized transportation along the various arterials to, to connect neighborhood centers and connect those neighborhoods to each other, and then connect neighborhood centers to the ferries. So, we just need to start building the appropriate facilities and building them out like we know that should be done. Finally, I think that we also ought to focus on how we can control traffic flow with our stoplights, signals, and sensors. And 5G communications will allow us to do that pretty easily and respond to ferry traffic and for, you know, closed business traffic and rush hour traffic, et cetera. So, there's a lot of things that we can do that we know to do. Let's just do it.
Thank you. Brenda Fanfry-Johnson.
You know, there's a lot of times when we're on the island and, and traffic is really bad, and it's, you know, one issue. You know, we, we just had that not too long ago with PSC putting up poles, and it just brought the whole island to, to gridlock because it wasn't planned properly. There's a logical way to go about understanding traffic patterns, and I think that's what the city is doing. We're, we were just presented with a presentation that outlined for us what, what is going to be happening with traffic. And all of that starts with the collection of data so that we can understand what the traffic patterns are now, and we can try to move toward where we would like them to be. And the whole idea that the city manager has created a whole committee to understand this tells you of, of his commitment and the city council's commitment to trying to reduce the traffic. I don't believe that reducing the speed is going to help. It seems like the older I get, the faster people go, so we'll see.
Thank you. Rashad Nasser.
Yes, first I will acknowledge that it is still a very real and current problem that council members routinely hear about. The council has definitely made some strides towards resolving some of those issues kind of in the near term. The Sustainable Transportation Plan, of course, is kind of big-picture thinking. It's going to produce a lot of recommendations, and then it's up to council and the community to implement those recommendations, for which we'll need the funding to go, to back some of those projects. I do support them and have supported our city's development of non-motorized levels of service. I think that's often overlooked. It's really important because what it does is tie new development with traffic concurrency, not for motorized traffic, but for non-motorized traffic. So, we'd get some, some support for the development of that infrastructure out of new development rather than coming from the city itself. Change starts with the Public Works Department because where we need a paradigm shift is how we conceive of our roads. Our roads should be priority, thought of as a place for non-motorized pedestrians and cyclists, and then second to that, cars.
Thank you. And lastly, Clarence Mariwaki.
This is a great conversation. I appreciate everyone's thoughts. One of the great things about campaigning, at least for me, is I get to go out to neighborhoods I've never been to because I do want to reach out. And as of now, I've covered 30 miles in the city and gone over 70,000 steps, and I've seen the island, all different areas where I've had no reason to go down to those neighborhoods. And one thing I've learned is there's not one size that fits all. This island has unique areas and unique needs and, and all these different neighborhoods. So, I think that putting a cap or a one-size-fits-all speed limit may not work for certain areas. So, we really have to be careful about how we will implement something like that that could have an impact on neighborhoods. It's really not that much of an issue. So, let's look at it that way. Let's look at it in a real study, and we, the, I love the speed limit signs. I know when I see them, I really do monitor my speed. So, that's a really cheap option if we need to speed control an area that seems to have more, more violations than normal. But one size won't really fit all. We have a very unique, very diverse island.
Thank you. Question six also about traffic. What are your thoughts on state Route 305 Working Group's proposal for a roundabout at West Point Madison, Port Madison, and Aviswell Lane? Would you consider alternative intersections? And we'll start with Clarence.
Well, first of all, I love roundabouts. I was in, I was here for the first one back in 2001 where I was told it was the most contentious issue since the Japanese-American incarceration in the newspaper. They work, they, we, they work and they work well. The problem with the 305 is it's sort of out of our control. It is a state project. We can, we can work with them and try to work on design, but the state has control over it. So, that's where we have to have our, our city council be involved early and, and voice our concerns in the community of why we think this is a good thing or a bad thing. And even though it moves forward, I know many people on the council are working on this, but we have to, now that it's working, or now that it's going to happen, let's make sure it has the smallest impact possible and make sure that the, the council, I mean, the State Department of Transportation listens to our concerns and tries to modify their projects to meet the concerns that our community is asking for.
Thank you. Rashad Nasser.
Yeah, this is a really good question. I, I absolutely don't support the roundabout on Highway 305. In fact, I, I came out recently at a council meeting. We were discussing the issue because there's been substantial community concerns. And I'm of the, of the position that I would encourage the council to oppose the roundabout entirely and that we would ask the state to come back with some other conceptual design for improvements for safety for that intersection. The, the council has been involved early in this discussion, and it's kind of moved along over, over time. But the, you know, the primary concern now in light of seeing the roundabout development in Polesbo is that it's going to be incredibly shocking to the island. It's dramatically inconsistent with our island values. There's going to be a lot of tree cutting and clearing, and most egregiously, it's going to be a lot of new pavement, which is exactly what we need to not be doing if we're going to meet our climate emissions reductions goals by 2040.
Thank you. And Brenda Fanfry-Johnson.
Well, you know, I have a bit of a conflict of interest here. Roundabout's going to be right in my backyard, so I definitely oppose it. I've opposed it from the beginning, and not just because it's in my backyard, but mainly, yes, it's in my backyard. But because it's very impacting to all of the residents that, that live along 305. And, you know, it, it, the way that it was brought to us, the communication has been not the very best communication. I mentioned before how the island just got locked up because PSC decided to stop traffic on 305 without informing the city. Nobody talked to the city manager. I ended up having to call the project manager, and it was just terrible. And, you know, then our power was out for two whole days, and it's, it's, it's not the best way to do business. And I think the council has a lot of way in the way that we want them to, if they're going to proceed with this, to do this.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I, I agree that the communication that was brought to, brought to Bainbridge Island was really lacking, and there is really no excuse for that. And I also think that, wonder if it's really in our control. I question the need for the roundabout, let alone the size of that, the size of that project. I mean, it's just enormous, and it was begun, frankly, without a lot of people, at least that I know, knowing about it. And I'm, I'm, what that leads me to believe is a concern that our, our state offices and, are these people, do they really care about talking to us on Bainbridge Island? And if they do, they don't show it. So, perhaps we ought to be having more of a liaison or more of a lobbyist, if you will, bringing our interests to the state.
Thank you. Joe Deets.
Yeah, thank you. A great question. Well, there is, we don't need a lobbyist or anything because there is a SR, SR, SR 305 Working Group that's been in operation way before my time on council. It's originated when $36 million was allocated by the state to improve traffic flow on 305. First, let's just admit, I haven't heard this in this group, that we have a traffic problem on 305. Every morning, it's, we're, we have back-to-back cars coming to the island. Every afternoon, it's the other way going around. We have to reduce the amount of traffic on the island. The best way right now, outside of anything, is the roundabouts. But I want to see alternatives, but really, roundabouts have been proven to be the most efficient way as far as safety and traffic flow. But most importantly right now is reduce the number of cars on the road through affordable housing, through public transit, and I'm fighting for the rights of the right-of-way workers. As Brenda, you know, I've been working very hard on that to ensure the right of people who are affected by the roundaway, right-of-way get what they deserve.
Thank you. Ron Peltier.
Thank you, Jackie. Well, it's pretty unrealistic to expect that we're going to reduce traffic on 305. They're building huge subdivisions up by Johnson Road, which is why they had to do the roundabout at Johnson Road, so they have traffic concurrency to support that development. The planning for these roundabouts has been going on for several years, and there have been workshops on the island, more than one workshop. And I guess it just shows that people don't pay attention to stuff until the bulldozer to actually show up. So, the alternative to, one of the alternatives to having these roundabouts is to have four-lane highways, which are similar
is to have four-lane highways, which are some of our friends in North Kitsap really wanted, but we got roundabouts instead. So there has been a process going on here that people aren't aware of. My advice to the city council members has been, see how you can mitigate this construction of these. If you have to have a wall built to protect a tree or whatever, to fine-tune these designs, but you're not going to get washed out to just say, no, we're not going to do roundabouts. It's not going to happen. It's too late in the planning process, so just so you know that.
Thank you. John Quitsland?
The first I heard about the roundabout in Brenda Fantry-Johnson's immediate neighborhood was from her in a campaign event. I'm still bewildered. I don't know exactly what the rationale would be for that location. I did participate in the discussion of the roundabout where Day Road comes in, and that was not going to work for environmental reasons and because of impact on land trust, conservancy, land, and so on. But the alternative to that, I can't imagine it working, so I don't know. We... I don't know how we'll reduce traffic, but getting it to move more smoothly has got to be a problem.
Thank you. Finally, Kent Scott?
No, I do not support the roundabouts. I mean, what's the purpose of the roundabout? It's really simple. It's to move cars. What are we trying to do? Move more cars more efficiently? I mean, there's a whole bunch of big liabilities with the roundabout besides the cost. I mean, number one issue is they're super dangerous for non-motorized use. Car enters the roundabout, what they want to do is get through it. They no longer have to stop or even look very adequately for non-motorized users trying to cross the roundabout. I mean, it's a nutty thing. If we're making it easier for driving and we're making it more dangerous for non-motorized, both those are non-starters. The other thing that was mentioned was how crazy it is the construction impacts. Do we really want to do this? I met with WashDOT, and I said, hey, could you slow the speed down on 305 and achieve the same throughput, the same number of vehicles? And they said, yes, 35 miles an hour would do the same thing as spending $39 million on roundabouts. Did they do it? No. I mean, I'm not supportive of this. I say fire all your landscape contractors so they don't come on island, so reduce the traffic.
Thank you. We have a lot more questions, but we have not a lot more time, so I'm going to have to scuttle the last ones, and we'll have to go to our closing statements of 90 seconds from each candidate in reverse order from the ballot. We'll start with Rasham Nassar.
Closing statements? I heard you correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, thank you so much for this evening, and thanks for all who've sat through and listened to candidate responses to the questions. I'll just keep this as brief as I possibly can. I want to serve another term on the city council because I have the experience to serve on the city council, so I don't need to learn the job. I know how to question, how to research, how to listen and engage with constituents on local issues of importance. I have a good working relationship with the new city manager, and I'm just now beginning to make the changes at City Hall I was elected to make in 2018. I have a land use background, which actually gives me an advantage over my opponent on the largest area of council work. And I have a voting record which proves that I have stood up to intense opposition and growth pressures to vote the way that the community elected me to vote, that I've stood up against special interests, that I've unwaveringly stood for equity and inclusion and meaningful public participation in our government processes and practices. I represent the interests of all islanders, not just a select few. In the four years that I have served on the city council, I have never compromised my values, and my voting record will prove that. I really want to run for another four years. I want to serve on the city council for the reasons I've stated. I ask voters to help support me, standing for the island for another four.
Rasham Morawaki?
Thank you. I'm surprised the Harrison Hospital thing didn't come up, but...
It was one of the questions, but I couldn't answer it.
Why? When I'm wrong, I'm wrong. And I've been asking Mayor Rasham Nassar since Friday's forum to answer her questions about that, and she keeps saying, call me back. I'll send the information to you later. She claims that it's 38% of the budget that the police is, and I claim 29%. I just had a verification from the city manager and the finance director, and I'm wrong. It's not 29%, it's 28%. So these are the facts, and when we work on city council, we have to deal with facts, not make something up. One thing that is about me is I'm full of, I have integrity, and I mentioned my city council work in Tuckwilla. The mayor is completely wrong on my service and understanding of zoning, land use, and the rest. On that city council, I also created the first human services program and the first sensitive areas ordinance of any city in Washington State. My belief in the city is we can do better. What I hear from all that walking, and I go around this community, I've done 30 miles, is they just want a sense of normalcy. They don't want to shake things up. They want to calm things down. They want to have belief in their government. When I became on the city council in Tuckwilla, it was a proud thing. The cream of the crop of our city wanted to be on the council because it was someplace that they honored, we did good work, and we did it affordably. So that's what I want to bring back to council. Hopefully, through my example and leadership, we can have that kind of pride back in our community.
Thank you. Chris Smith?
Thank you for that. Bainbridge Island is at an inflection point. A lot of variables outside our control are impacting how Bainbridge is going to look in the future. We need to find some solutions and commit to resolving those challenges and the demands that are related to the negative impacts of climate change, which we've talked about. Well-planned, affordable housing balanced with a available water supply, and realizing that housing equity is a direct path to racial equity, which I'm committed to. We need efficient multimodal transportation, which we've discussed, where we can integrate safely bikes, trails, and blended with motorized and non-motorized traffic. We need to increase the high-speed communication services on this island, both to attract the high-value people that are going to be considering coming to Bainbridge and to support our businesses and our local community so that we can thrive together. We also need to improve the fire protection because one crown fire, like we've seen about on TV, and everything is going to be all over. So I'm all over about the environment and protecting our city and our protecting its citizens.
Thank you. Brenda?
Hi. Yeah, I want to continue being on the council so that I can continue seeing the items that we've put forth through the end. And I think that we're doing a really good job with the items that we have. I came here 15 years ago and got right away involved in my community. I started teaching people about disaster recovery and what to do in case of an emergency. And so, you know, I believe that I possess what's necessary to look at the issues from a different perspective than what we've been looking at them. It is time to continue the equity that we have on the council. We do need to shake up some things because status quo gives you the same thing that you've gotten. And so in order to, you know, get back to stability and servant leadership, we need to put people on the council who can continue to do that. My qualifications include integrity and decades of leadership and professionalism. My unique perspective as a Black woman who has lived through poverty and come out on the other side lends a hand to why we need affordable housing and diversity on the island. And I pledge to push forward, even when there are barriers. There's always barriers being put up, and I will push forward even when people say, oh, there's nothing that can be done about that, to persevere even when I've been told, don't even talk about that, to speak on behalf of those who have been historically silenced and/or ignored.
Thank you. Ron Peltier?
Thank you, Jackie. Between 1993 and 2016, I traveled on 13 cedar canoe trips to the tribes from Washington and Canada as a photographer and a member of the Suamish canoe family. It was a profound learning experience to transform my understanding of what it means to be a human being. Among other things, I learned that being white in and of itself doesn't make me any better than someone else. In 2016, I was immersed in another transformative experience called city council. As a council member, I demonstrated an ability to collaborate with others to get things done, including important new protections for trees and native vegetation, a new land use review process, and a special day to honor indigenous people. I also learned some valuable lessons. I learned that as an elected official, the things you say and do carry extra weight, that it's not enough to be honest, to be right, or even to be ethical. You have to be disciplined because careless words and actions, if however innocent, can be twisted and sensationalized to undermine everything that you do. I believe in journeying out of one's comfort zone to learn and grow, and look forward to taking all the things I've learned for another term on your city council to secure the future of our island. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. And Joe Dietz?
Yeah, thank you, Jackie, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for putting this on. Islanders, an opportunity is before you to choose your leaders. Now more than ever, Bainbridge Island needs leaders who have demonstrated that they have the necessary depth of knowledge, the skills and dedication to do the work that the people expect them to do, and not least, that they have the temperament, that the candidate has the temperament to establish effective working relationships with everyone, not just those they agree with. All these things I possess, and I have a track record to prove it. But please, don't take my word for it. Listen to the people who support me. They include US Congressman Derek Kilmer, former Washington State Senator Phil Rockefeller, six former city council members, notable business leaders in the community, such as Larry Nakata supports me, such as Greg Bronkey of PAC Westy, and leader in sustainable transportation. I have a labor leader, a labor union, UFC W21, notable climate leaders in the community, notable equity leaders, all the representations in the Democratic Party in Kitsap County. I swept the boards with their endorsements. The Bainbridge Island Progressive Voters Guide endorsed me. Please look that up. This broad range of support says something. It's indicative of my approach as your representative for the last three and a half-plus years and what you can expect from me in a second term. It's been truly my honor to serve you as a city council member. We're moving in the right direction in many ways, but important work lies ahead. This is why I'm running up for another term and why I asked for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kent Scott?
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for this forum. It's been very instructive. I am the candidate that can hit the ground running. I am the candidate for the South Ward that understands the issues firsthand with realistic background and experience. And I am the candidate that has the most experience and the broadest experience working within the community and city groups. It is a bit daunting, though, even to run for council because I realize that if I were to be elected, I would be 69 when the term is over, and I think that's so old. What am I doing? But I think that the things that council needs to focus on are the very sober kind of ground things that we can make a difference on. You know, today we talked about PSC and other things that are much broader, I think, than we need to have. We need to look at issues from an intersectionality point of view. I mean, affordable housing doesn't exist by itself. Conserving the environment doesn't exist by itself. Climate change does not exist by itself. All these things are interconnected. A lot of these things have to do with land use and how we deal with these. I moved here because of the rural quality, rural character and quality of life. I am seeing those things disappear, and I'm also seeing people who live here who don't understand how it used to be. I am committed to work with my experience professionally and with the city to improve the quality of life that the Complant embraces.
Thank you. And finally, John Quitsland?
Yes. Kent Scott and I have vowed to be better friends after this election process than we are now. We're on the same page. We have a lot of the same claims in terms of our experience and our desire to make connections, to, as Kent said, hit the ground running. I'm fired up because I'm so aware, from the time I spent on the planning commission, of all sorts of unfinished business. And I'm also aware of very, very bold and ambitious plans that the city is committed to. I believe I have the equipment to contribute as one person out of seven. I'm not going to run the show, but to contribute really to momentum and achievement on the council, especially in the area of improvements in the municipal code. That's something that has been talked about. And I've done that work myself. I wrote, I drafted the multifamily tax exemption program that the council talked about last night. And I didn't do it all by myself to bring it together, but that's one example.
Thank you, and thank you all candidates and voters. We hope this forum has helped you choose your candidates. Unlike the primary, all island voters will vote for each ward or district position, not just the one in which you live. Ballots for the 11-221 election will be mailed no later than 10/15/21. And the league is encouraging you to vote early and to return your ballots by October 26th, either by mail or in the ballot drop box on Madison between the school district offices and the pool. Thank you for attending, and good night and good luck.